Good morning, everybody, and welcome to Spokane City Council's study session for today. We've got three topics: a report on Division Connects, and then we're going to get a software suite update for our criminal justice system, and then we're going to hear from our chief financial officer on 2023 budget financial status. So Division Connects, who's or is it on?
Jason and Colin are virtual.
All right.
And Amanda.
All right, who's going to take the lead?
So I wanted to briefly introduce things. I know that we just got this at Urban Experience earlier this month, but just as a refresh, so Division Connects has been a collaborative two-year transportation and land use study, which has been led by Spokane Regional Transportation Council in partnership with Spokane Transit Authority, the city, Spokane County, and WashDOT. So Jason Leann is the SRTC project manager, and he has helped consultant Parametrics sort of part us cats as we're wrapping up this study. So what we're leading up to is the reports on land uses and active transportation projects which are being finalized. And I will, Jason, give you more detail than he was able to provide at Urban Experience on what those sort of entail and we might expect them.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. I have a presentation I'll share, and I have a little bit of a preamble that's going to be similar to what you saw as a refresher at the Urban Experience Committee, but then I'll get a little bit more into the detail of some of the work that's been produced in the study, particularly in Phase Two of the study, which is just wrapping up. So my name's Jason Leann, and Amanda already introduced me as the project manager on the SRTC side for the Division Connects study. Okay. And so the study's structure, I'll go over this again really quickly. Project management is jointly managed between SRTC and STA, working closely with our project partners at WashDOT, City of Spokane, and Spokane County. We had a steering committee that met periodically throughout the study process. It included elected officials and also executives from STA and WashDOT. The consultant team, the lead consultant was Parametrics, who helped us do the technical work for this study. So the study was launched at the beginning of 2020. It was conducted in two phases. Multiple agency partnership, that's kind of one of my key roles, has been just making sure that everyone is at the table and involved in the discussion about Division Street. The focus of the study, the original driver of the study was looking at bus rapid transit concepts along Division, but also looked beyond transit to all transportation modes within the Division Street corridor from its connection to downtown Spokane, through up north to its connection to the North Spokane Corridor, past the North Division Y, relationship to the North Spokane Corridor, so understanding that once the NSC is complete and fully connected to I-90, what type of implication does that have for travel on Division, and what kind of opportunities does that present along Division Street? And also, as part of all this, is also looking at some land use opportunities along Division, particularly with coming investment in high-performance So overall, the study timeline kicked off at the beginning of 2020. One of the main work products that came out of the first phase of the study was an alternatives analysis looking at various different BRT options along Division, and then ultimately selecting a locally preferred alternative for bus rapid transit, which is documented in the corridor development plan, which concluded Phase One of Division Connects. That corridor development plan and preferred alternative were accepted by both the STA board and SRTC board in spring of 2021. That kicked off the second and final phase of the study, which is last summer, and that Phase Two reporting is being wrapped up this month. So the scope of work focused on these three main areas. One is land use planning, transportation planning with a focus on active transportation projects connecting along and through the corridor, and also public engagement components to help inform both the land use and transportation So these are, I'm going to highlight in the next few slides, some of the main work products that are coming out of Division Connects Phase Two. And one of the highlights is profiles of land use nodes along Division. So these are areas that have been delineated, loosely delineated, along the Division Street corridor that are centered around future bus rapid transit stations, and looking at what are the existing conditions there, what are planning and zoning conditions there, what are existing assets, and what are some opportunities there? So each of these nodes, there's actually 12 identified in total along different parts of the corridor, and what their potential is for change over time. So that's documented in these two-page profiles, which are part of an appendix for the Division, the Phase Two final report. I will say that it doesn't get into the detail of identifying like specific change. It gives like kind of a higher level overview of where there's opportunity, with the idea that the land use jurisdictions, that the city and the county can then take that information as a foundation and build on future more detailed planning work. Another piece that was produced was a visual source book of development types, and there's an illustration of that right at the bottom of this slide. It's an indicator of different land use potential, land use types. So if you're having a conversation or talking about mixed-use development, for example, or medium-density residential, kind of what does that look like? So you have a visual cue for what those different terms mean when talking to stakeholders, elected officials, the public, and so on. And then the final technical piece here, and I'll highlight some of the findings, is a travel demand modeling exercise that the study went through to see what future travel demand looks like along Division Street with the North Spokane Corridor in place, and also with investment in BRT in place. So it gives an indication of what some travel behavior may look like in the future. So there's a couple of different things going on here with the trial demand model, but I'm going to give you some of the high-level takeaways. So one of the performance metrics that we have looked at from the regional travel model is vehicle miles traveled. So when looking at vehicle miles traveled per resident within the study corridor and per employee within the study corridor, we start to get an idea of what is the vehicle miles travels per the service population, which is both those home-based trips and those employment trips combined. And vehicle miles traveled is a metric to see if, once you start introducing improved transit along Division, and also start to introducing a bit higher intensities of land use, kind of the assumption is that vehicle miles traveled per service population should go down, and then the model helped validate that assumption. So on this next slide, what we found overall, and this is, I guess, no surprise, is that metrics of vehicle miles traveled, vehicle hours traveled, and vehicle hours delayed within the corridor in the year 2045 all increased. So that's just, in the aggregate, increases in all those metrics based on, you know, increases in population and increases in employment. But when you take that information and you divide it by the service population, you find that when you are changing land use and also introducing improved transit on Division, that the per capita and per employee vehicle miles traveled starts to decline within the study area of Division Street corridor. One of the other interesting findings is looking at Division Street compared to the North Spokane Corridor, and what you'll see, that once the NSC in the model is in place, that becomes a very attractive facility for regional trips. It's a limited access highway in that it's a more timely way to travel north to south through Spokane and through the region. And so with that, a lot of new trips in the future are absorbed by the NSC, to the extent that volumes on Division and also other north-south arterials, including Nevada-Hamilton, for example, actually decrease a little bit in the future despite overall growth in population and employment. So it just demonstrates the attractiveness of the NSC compared to what people today use as those routes to travel north and south. And as you might think, in terms of transit ridership, once you start introducing higher-performing transit along Division, and also some higher intensities of population and employment, you start to see increases in transit ridership. So no build compared to existing actually sees a fairly significant increase in ridership. And no build is actually all these projects in place, including the NSC, except with essentially no change to Division bus service. And despite that, you see an increase in transit ridership based on increases in population and so on. When you start introducing in the built scenarios, which include improved transit and also some additional land use along Division, you see an additional increase of roughly 30% in ridership. So that becomes an attractive option for the population that's being served there. So there's kind of a lot to unpack there. Is there any questions before I move to the next slide?
Not seeing any.
So last couple of slides, just highlighting what we have, main components coming out of the study in the second phase, those walking and biking projects, and Amanda mentioned that, for active transportation within the corridor, and largely these are facilities that aren't actually on Division Street itself. It's looking at options that help connect people to future BRT stations and do crossings along major streets, and also parallel routes to Division. So if you're walking or biking or using a motorized scooter, you can make these connections along and through the corridor. And what that has resulted in is process to identify what are 30 different potential recommended projects along Division that are largely on either city or county streets that are under those jurisdictions. And these types of projects are things like sidewalk infill, protected bike lanes, and crossing locations. So those have been taken to a conceptual design level, and some have been taken to a 30% design level. And all that information and also CAD drawings that have been produced from the study have been, are available and made available to both the city and county and WashDOT for future consideration in project implementation. The last couple of things here, we did look at making sure that the facilities that are recommended meet criteria for all ages and abilities. So it's not just the strong and committed folks that are either bike riding that will use these, but they have a level of comfort that's attractive for all users. And then the final piece is funding opportunities. So the consultant team provided recommendations for funding opportunities, some things that you're probably familiar with already, but also some new things that are coming from the federal infrastructure bill that creates some opportunity for potential project funding. And then, just to highlight what we did for public engagement throughout the second phase, we had a couple of questionnaires that were available toward the end of last year, and both closed at the end of December, but they're open for two to three months. We had a questionnaire that talked about those active transportation projects to get some feedback, and where people see opportunities, and where they see safety concerns. We also had an interactive map and questionnaire for the land use nodes, so folks had some thoughts that they could submit through the questionnaire about land use along Division. To think about what local developers and property stakeholders are thinking about Division, we had interviews, one-on-one interviews with those folks to talk about market potential, and what they see is with these coming investments in bus rapid transit, what implications that has from their perspective. So that was pretty interesting. And then, of course, disengagement with boards and committees, both at SRTC and STA, and through the Plan Commission and through council briefings, to keep everyone informed as the study process carried on through over the last couple of years, and then at the local level, at the neighborhood level, through neighborhood councils and the community assembly. So all the work that I just described is bundled into the final report for Phase Two, which is called the Division Connects Vision and Implementation Strategy. This document is complete, largely complete. There's just a few final refinements being done, a few comments being incorporated. And what I expect is all this material to be finalized and then posted onto the divisionconnects.org website by the end of this month, so that will be publicly available. And then on the SRTC side, process includes an informational update in July, so next month, and anticipate an action item by the SRTC board in September to accept the Phase Two findings. So with the conclusion of the study process, it's not the end, it's actually kind of the beginning to some new processes that it's building toward. One of those major ones is the Division BRT preliminary engineering process, which has been kicked off, being led by STA with help from a consultant team. And they'll be looking at all the design details for implementing station locations, other amenities along the corridor for bus rapid transit. And then on the land use side, a grant has been procured to help both the city and the county do additional land use planning for transit-oriented development along the corridor. So Amanda is actually working on that to look at what some of the findings are in Division Connects, and to build on that and do some more detailed planning So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Jason?
Thanks for keeping us up to date, everybody, and all your work. We're looking forward to a new Division. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
We're going to hear something called the E-Series Update, which means nothing to most people, so I'm really looking forward to hearing from folks and explaining what it is. I know it's been a lot of work and has the potential to really transform our criminal justice system.
Is this where I get to the presentation?
But you're going to need to talk into the mic.
Yeah, and you'll need to hit share on the, I've already opened all the presentations that were in there, so it should be in PowerPoint.
There it is.
You'll just need to share it into the WebEx meeting.
Okay, E-Series. Thanks for having us today. It's good to see you guys again. Good morning. It's been two years since we've given an update on this project, so this is our time to come back and give you an update. We have some pretty good things to report as far as progress made in our next steps. We have some new faces in the crowd, so we also wanted to take this opportunity to give everybody kind of an overview of the project itself. So we're going to be taking a little bit of a step back and kind of explaining a few things to make sure that we keep everybody kind of on the same page. We'll go over some background on legal case management over the past few years, talk about the system we're transitioning out of, which is JustWare, and then the system we're transitioning into, which is E-Series. Talk about kind of how we got started, where we're at on the implementation, give you a little bit of idea of how much cost has been accumulated to date, and what we need to finish things off, as well as some, just an overview on some of the opportunities that are going to open up as a result of this platform, and some of the things we've already identified that we need to get working as projects in 2023. This is Matt Moore from IT. He's a key member of the team. I don't think Howard needs much introduction. Howard's here with us, too. So we're going to be sort of tag-teaming slides as we go through this. We meant to keep it pretty short and high level for you guys, but please feel free to ask questions as we go through. Howard, you're up.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having us. Good morning, Council. So our entire system was a paper-based system until roughly 2008 in Criminal Justice, 2007, when prosecutor, public defender, and then probation implemented the JustWare system. The court did not get fully implemented until August of 2013. I took over as court administrator in July of 2013, and it had been obvious that implementation was lagging behind, and we needed to just, in the words of Nike, "do it." So literally 60 days later, we implemented. The first day, we had everything in paper boxes, believing that, you know, we needed a backup plan for this electronic system. Never pulled one file out of a box. We hit the ground running in the electronic systems, and we have literally never looked back. In the court alone, our JustWare implementation allowed us to basically, through attrition, reduce 12 FTE positions, which gave us the same work capacity with fewer FTEs in place. So when we're talking about the costs in the later slides, you have to balance that against both what the system looked like when we transitioned to paper, and what it would look like now, as we would have had to continue to add employees based on increases in all things law enforcement courts and basically prosecution over the last decade. One of the reasons we decided to make the transition was JustWare was a bit limited in function of partially the way we bought it and some implementation decisions that were made. The interconnections we had always hoped to achieve between the agencies, again, court, prosecutor, public defender, and probation, as well as external interfaces, jail system, the predecessor of LREMs actually at the time, were difficult to achieve. So it was one of the major things we looked at solving here. Again, JustWare had some interagency workflow and limitations problems. The new system is incredibly flexible in terms of supporting both the court, as well as the other agencies, and our supervision program. You've heard me in a number of settings talk about us shifting away from the, you know, straight arrest and incarceration model, which, again, hasn't gone well for the U.S. in the last couple hundred years we've been trying it. So we decided to shift the principle to behavior change. So through the adaptations we've made, thanks to Mr. Moore, in the system, we're really able to take the behavioral change model, we call it Risk Needs Responseivity Model of Supervision, to the next level. Similarly, we're keeping far more data points now, so we're going to have much better analytics in terms of the programs that we're implementing moving the needle on criminal justice. Everything from recidivism to FTA rates, that's appearing in court when you're supposed to, to not complying with your tombs of supervision, to therapeutic court performance, all those areas, we're going to have far more data and much better reporting. The exciting part, as we talked about, if some of you were here for the Blueprint for Reform, was interoperability with other systems. We're literally connected to jail tracker now, LREMs now. We're working on an electronic data repository with the state, so we will get information from the rest of the state's systems and be able to provide information to the rest of the state's systems. So we're all really excited about that. Why did we decide to move? Again, the system is very dynamically configurable. As you know, criminal justice and the legislature does not tend to stand still a whole bunch. Every year, it's something new or different. There's many new approaches also on the science side, evidence-based practices on dealing with criminal behavior in a much more science-based manner than we used to do in the early years, you know, I started in '93. And we mostly guessed about what people needed, and it wasn't always right, let me just tell you. Again, the Blueprint for Reform laid out the need for this sort of systems. We did not choose this system lightly. We went out with a full-on RFP process. We narrowed it down to two potential systems, one by Tyler Technologies, the other by then, it's now Journal Technologies Inc., then Newdon Technologies. And we actually went and did site visits at courts and prosecutor, public defender, and prosecutor's office using these systems, looked at the interconnectability that they were actually using, and it just boiled down to frankly, the JTI product, E-Suite, being a superior product and able to accomplish those things. Additionally, as we were moving through the project, the decision was made to sunset JustWare, and to the whole company was moving in the E-Series direction. So we were lucky we made a decision, because our current software would simply age out of support here in the next year or so. The things that excited me most, frankly... The things that excited me most, frankly, data and performance measures excite me, but the ability to meet the public's needs through, and lawyer needs, through electronic filing. We were literally, I believe, the second jurisdiction in the state to have true electronic filing. King County, which has the same system, King County District Court actually is in front of us in the implementation chain, so they were the first one. The second one is the ability to manage case, fine and fee payments electronically, allowing people to go in and on their own, make payments, review all their cases, see what's happening, and then through our portal, lawyers can actually go in and look at their cases, know what's happening, run reports for future court dates. I mean, literally integrated the lawyer's information system and ability with what we can produce on the system.
Implementation?
Huh?
What's next?
It's implementation. It's Matt.
Yeah.
Okay. So principally, we replaced JustWare for the court in production. We're moving towards now doing prosecutor, public defender, and probation. It's the first step. The court had the most processes, so it made the most sense to change it over first. And I think the lessons learned in our data conversion and all our work now helps the other agencies avoid any pitfalls that we saw during our implementation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Do you have any talking points you want to add on there?
So I think on this one, one of the most important things is that we needed to take a step into this space. We didn't know what we didn't know about actually using it. And so this was a big, big piece to get the courts in place and ready to go so that not only they could learn the system, but the IT staff could learn the system. Because we didn't, you know, we were working with it when they were implementing it, but we didn't quite, you know, we didn't know everything, right? You never know everything on day one. So that was a really important piece for us. It also worked well because of the way that JustWare was integrated into the systems. Court was kind of its own island. The other thing I want to note about JustWare going away is it was, the public access to it was Internet Explorer-based. You could not use anything but Internet Explorer. I know that there were nasty grams that had come in about that. That was one of the big things about moving to E-Court and having this public portal. Let's go to the next slide. So currently, we have that public portal. We are currently taking cases from LERMs, the police records system. That is how all our infractions and misdemeanors come into E-Court. We also integrate Jail Tracker, which is the county system for monitoring who is in jail. So we know when people come in, when they go out, so we have a constant flow and knowledge of who's in the system.
And just a quick note on this, especially around the law enforcement LERMs, a big part of the day each morning was spent, the clerks pulling, manually going and finding cases that they needed to pull out of LERMs, documents, police reports, citations, and physically build in their corresponding JustWare system. All this with the pressure of trying to meet first appearance at 10:30, and then just keeping up with that workload, I mean, just building cases, creating them, manually typing data and uploading documents into the case, into the case folder. So just from an operational standpoint, those, that right there was, in my estimation, a pretty significant step forward. I just wanted to make sure we called that out.
Sorry. So a quick question on this, because I believe the police are getting a new system. Is this all going to be able to integrate and be used?
So I think that's a great point. One of the nice things about the interface that we have is it's relatively simple on how the data comes from LERMs. So we have some different approaches on how we can handle that. We can either write a new interface, which is an option, or we can ensure that the new system exports in a similar way, basically producing the same files that then we can consume effectively. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, so I guess my question is, is the new program that we're getting capable of doing that, or do we have to go an extra step to make them communicate better?
So I believe that's part of the contract that they're working on, but I'd have to rely to that project independently.
We've started having meetings with Taru, Shawna Ernst, well, Matt has, to discuss the requirements for the integrations. I think universally these days, any application has to have a certain level of integration capabilities. This one certainly does, so we can do, we can sort of meet whatever the to system or the from system might require.
I guess we can talk about that a little bit later and make sure that that's all.
I think I can answer that a little bit in the sense that I do know that they have an API that allows them to do things. We have not fully, I'd say we have not worked out exactly how that will all play in. I actually, I'm going to take this opportunity to say that I think there's a lot of opportunity, if they go to that system, to do even more, because our system, let's just go to the next slide here at this point, you know, let's go to what we're looking at in the future, right? At some point, we're going to have, let's go to even the next one, where we're going, right? Because we are where we are, it's great, but where we're going is to a place where all four systems are integrated. They're talking to each other. What these tools allow us to do, though, is to integrate other systems. We can, this is a very malleable system. It is not like JustWare, it's not like the devices, what was the Tyler system, okay? Those are very set in stone. They have very set ways of being run. This is not that. This is, you want this to be blue here, it's blue here. You want it to be orange over here, it's orange over there. It has such flexibility that sometimes it's detriment, I would say. But what it does allow us to do is to fit into what Howard was talking about, how the courts are changing constantly. Supervision is changing. This allows us to have that malleability and try, try to keep up with them. That's the one thing I will say, is try to keep up, because it's a challenge just from being a part of this. The other thing I really want to say and mention about this new system, when we go live in September, this is per JTI. This is going to be the first system that has four agencies integrated, where that data is flowing back and forth. We're talking about things like court, simple as court dates, right? Court dates entered by Howard's team, flow to supervision, flow to the prosecutor, flow to the public defender. Cases flow quickly to public defender. It supports a lot of that ability, and it's the first in the world, right? That's what I'm telling you. It's the first in the world per JTI. People have done supervision and court. People have done prosecutor and public defender. But no one has taken the opportunity to bring all of those agencies together and share all that information to that level.
If I could comment really quickly on the --
Can you make sure you're talking into the mic? We've got people online, they can't hear you. We hear you, but they can't hear you.
Yeah, usually easy to hear. We're talking about the LERMs integration. The advantage here is, is unlike when they started LERMs, I think the new product's We started our process after they were three-quarters of the way done. In this new system, we begin the planning on the ground floor, so we can lay out the requirements for the contract, we know what we're getting into, and on both sides of the equation, that's the Axon side and the E-Series side, we can plan and execute this time. And that's always better than, of course, coming in on the middle of a movie, so that's an important element.
Just, so a couple of questions. One is, I guess, and maybe you'll get there, but what is a platform for person-based behavioral change models? So how is this online system going to affect behavioral change? And then my other question is, is this going to simplify and maybe even broaden public access to public records from the courts?
Second question I'll answer first, absolutely, I'm sorry, absolutely, and it actually already has. Right now, you can log on with even no credentials, and you can look at cases, you can look at certain things that are inside, again, more limited than you could if you got a login and that sort of thing. Defendants with a login can go look at their cases, they know how much they owe. I mean, literally, there's about five canned reports that anybody can run, so vast improvement already. First question is, we've changed to a person-based behavioral change. It used to be, you made all the decisions about what was happening with supervision and how we were trying to change your behavior by just looking at the charge you were charged with. That's way too narrow of a view. Now we step back and look at the person, right? And say, the person may have one or more cases, so how do we take a holistic approach that's not just charge-based and look at you or the person in order to what do they need to change the behavior that's causing whatever charges they had, without totally fixating on the fact that this is a DWI or that's a theft? We go in and look at the underlying issues producing the behavior and then form a personalized plan to change that negative behavior.
And so does this system develop that plan using some sort of advanced behavioral analysis, or does somebody else develop that plan and it just gets uploaded into the system?
So there's sort of two pieces to this puzzle, right? I think one of the things is, when we talk about JustWare with what I'm going to call probation, it was, it was set in, not in this space, right? It was developed around cases. It's actually linked to the prosecutor's case. The E-Series version of this, E-Supervision, is switched all around. It's all person-based instead of case-based. What it enables you to do is things like assessments in the system, instead of having to do it on a piece of paper. It allows you to build case plans for an individual. It's more of a tool, I would say, than it is actually like some sort of AI piece that's, you know, doing that for you, because it does need that human interaction. We can't replace the community justice counselors, right? They have an important role in understanding those people, but what it does is allows them to do a better job of assessing people, but also having that whole system sort of together, built around this platform that they're using. Does that kind of answer?
To specifically answer your question on whether it's internally developed or externally, the assessment, oh, sorry, the assessment serieses we use to determine both someone's risk, that's risk of recidivism, risk of violence, those sorts of things, and needs, that's what are the barriers that are preventing effective behavioral change. I have nowhere to live, I have a terrible drug or alcohol problem, I mean, whatever those things are, lack of education. Those are produced by, the assessments are scientifically based and have been developed by universities and validated on large populations and misdemeanors. So instead of guessing what the issues are, we're actually giving you a series of assessments, which then give us indicators of what both the risks for you, for future behavior are, and the needs. And that's all part of the evidence-based practices and behavior change model we're switching to. So again, those are all nationally validated tools, and when we build up enough of our own assessments, our plan is to bring the university in here, University of Cincinnati in this case, and have them locally validate those assessments with our population, which will even make them more accurate for those people here in Spokane, much like Texas has done and other jurisdictions.
Well, in terms of recidivism, I assume it looks at previous convictions and activities, because I, so I would love to better understand, you know, what goes wrong when we have somebody on the street with 22 felonies? I mean, how do we get to that point if the system is supposed to be analyzing their likelihood of recidivism? I'd say after two or three felonies, it's a pretty good indication.
Well, remember, right now, Spokane Municipal Court is the only jurisdiction in the reason, in the region doing this. So they're not looking at this at the felony level at all. So we're instituting the model here. Spokane County District Court is trying to follow us along that path for their misdemeanance, and at some point, I assume Superior Court will follow suit with some system. But as has happened in criminal justice over the last decade, the city has been principally first in many of these areas with other people following us. So Department of Corrections actually uses a variation of one of the assessments we use in the prison setting, so they can start making decisions about what people's risks and barriers are and acting on those so they can more effectively deal with behavior change in the incarceration setting. Juvenile Court also uses similar assessment series. We just happen to be first on the adult criminal side.
I'm going to just throw one other thing in there. If Howard's team comes up with, hey, there's a new assessment, we have the ability to build that new one, right? That's the capabilities that we're bringing forward, that sort of ability to hit the next piece, so.
But just to be clear, the E-Series allows you to integrate an independent assessment so that it's available for everybody in that. It is not doing the assessment itself.
So, yeah, I mean, a person is entering data, right? There, it's a, you know, some of them are 20, 30 questions long, right? They're incredibly long and they're very detailed assessments that they do, and it just scores it for them. It gives them that information and retains that for future analysis.
Yeah, E-Supervision doesn't come loaded with these, preloaded with these. They are vetted by Howard and his team, and then Matt does the magic of incorporating it, building it into the system so it can execute those surveys. So with that, to build on what Matt said, that's the, kind of one of the, the benefits of this system is that it can support continuous improvement very easily, whether it's in the prosecutor's office, the court, wherever, clerks, judges, because it is flexible, right? And can meet a lot of different needs, so it's a, it's a good improvement. Implementation costs, so you'll see on the screen there, two, at the estimate of completion, which will be the end of this year, we are looking at a total cost of $1.565 million. That is between the vendor contract costs, which is JTI, as well as our staff augmentation costs. So that would be our Volt contract. You know, we bring resources in to build capacity and skill sets that we may not have or at various times in the project. We have converted two vendor employee, vendor contract folks from Volt and one from Nevada to the city as FTEs, myself being one of them and Matt being the other. So it's a, it's a great model for us to kind of test people out, if you will. Their skill sets, their ability, so when we do have a position that comes open, we have somebody that, they know they like us, we know they like them. It's been very beneficial to us to make some good hiring choices over the past couple of years. Any questions on the cost side of things? Tony?
Quick, sorry.
There was a comment.
Councilmember Bingel.
Yeah, sorry, real quick. So is this up here, is this telling me that we're going to save $700,000, the difference between 2017 to 2021, or is that a cumulative?
That's cumulative.
Okay.
Yep. That's kind of what we spent to date, and this is what we expend, expect to spend to finish out the year. And you'll see me on Monday for an SBO, and that is to fund the rest of this year on our, on our vendor contracts, our staff augmentation side of things, so. Any questions on costs? So Howard?
Thank you. Again, as we discussed before, the opportunities presented by the technology in the system, I've been doing this since 1982, are just phenomenal, right? Better aligning the work of district superior in municipal court, we Better aligning the work of district superior in municipal court, we all function within this jurisdiction. We all normally see the same people at different levels, whether they get older and I'll say graduate from misdemeanors to felonies, which is one of the things we're trying to avoid with our behavior change model. But we can really rapidly here, when we get through the EDR, that's the state system next year, and interface with it, we can all see what everybody's doing at every moment in time, in real time, basically. It's going to be excellent. Right now, a lot of our processes are still manual, the way warrants and no contact orders move back and forth with the law enforcement record system, and that all goes automated as we finish this project, which again saves repeated clerical workloads, which then gives you capacity to focus those on customer service, better accuracy, better data, and other projects. Again, same thing with alignment with police records, this one more for the prosecutor. They'll be able to directly access and import digital evidence, including everything from body cams to, to any other digital file. The court performance and outcome analytics truly excite me. We are actually having a product or a series of assessments for trial court performance called Core Tools, which is a function of the National Center for State Courts built into the system. So literally, at the touch of a button, we will know critical court performance elements, for instance, time to disposition, age of pending caseload, trial date certainty, just to name a few. So it really will show us that what we're doing in the systems that we implement are meeting, or our goal is exceeding national standards. And we don't have to go in and do hand counts and find this stuff out in two- or five-year increments. We can literally run it on a six-month basis and adjust our programs in, in order to improve the metrics. The 2023 initiatives, again, the EDR with the state is a big one, the, the data exchange. The supervision treatment, it's right now called the OLR. What happens is, is you get placed on post-sentence supervision, you're supposed to go get an alcohol and drug assessment, right? So this system right now allows us to fill out the referral, send it to the treatment provider. The treatment provider then sees the person and updates us electronically through that system. The problem right now is with the old JustWare system, which is still running in CJS, there's a manual interaction between the two, and it's not tracked as well as one would hope. When the new e-supervision system is in, with the case plans and all that, the, the interface that will replace OLR will allow us to have, again, instant access to compliance, treatment notes, all the things we expect people to be doing out there to change their behavior, and allows us, if it's not going correctly, to intervene in a much more timely fashion. So I guess in, in closing, I'd just like to make one comment. I can't tell you how important it has been, both to have counsel and administration support for these programs, the allocation of the initial money, the recognition that to be number one in criminal justice takes a little investment, and, and we appreciate that. The second thing I would like to tell you is, the partnership with ITSD has been phenomenal. Their team has been great, they've been behind us every moment. You know, Mike Sloan lets me stand in front of his desk and cry and whine without backlashing. We've worked together phenomenally, and I look forward to continuing that partnership. So I, I don't care whatever else anyone wants to tell you about the computer folks, they've been great as far as the court, prosecutor, public defender are concerned. In fact, we have group admin meetings, and we talk about that literally every meeting. So to the extent you can all give ITSD a golf clap on this one, they deserve it.
That ends our presentation.
Thank you for all this work. This is really encouraging, really excited.
Thank you very much.
All right. Tanya Wallace, come on up.
Okay, Paul and Josie is online, and Jake Miller is here. They're also going to speak a little bit. Thank you, councilmembers, for this opportunity to talk with you and get you up to date on our finances. So we have three primary things that we're going to talk to you about today in terms of the financial status, and that's 2021 year-end. What I'm going to talk to you about is going to be really, really brief. There is a report, I gave the link to that report to Hannah Lee so she can get it out to all of you. It really is like a five or 10-minute read. It's intended to be short, capture the highlights. And then there are also all of the appendices, which have the revenues and expenditures for the general fund, our special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and internal service. So it's not including the fiduciary funds or debt service funds. So it kind of looks like this when you open it up. The reading part is only about nine pages, but it does cover some of the highlights and just gives you some comparisons against how we did against 2020, how we did against the 2021 budget. And then I do want to preface that it includes encumbrances when you look at those actuals. Encumbrances are really just a matter of timing. We, if we had had more time, we would have completed those costs within that timeframe. So that's why they're counted right now as part of the actuals. And also, the numbers that are included in this report are unaudited, which means they are subject to change. The audit has been, or I should say, the financial statements have been submitted to the SAO at this time, so the audit is underway now. So I'm going to go very quickly and just cover highlights with respect to time so that there's more time allotted to mid-year status and the general fund trial balance. And as you know, departments are right now going through line items in all of their various programs for '23. I want to give you just a few little highlights from the executive retreat last Tuesday. The mayor and her cabinet met, we had a full-day executive retreat where each of the divisions went through their goals, their objectives, and some key initiatives and challenges that they're facing at least over the next 18 months. And then we're going to cover very quickly just some next steps. So year-end general fund summary, this is right, the first page of the report. So general fund total revenue, you can see there, and in short, you can see the $9.6 million overspend compared to our revenues. But the good point there is that we anticipated overspending, that was intentional overspend. And a lot of that is really with the police retro that we had in place. So we, we anticipated, and you can look over against the budget, 20 million overspend is what we anticipated. So we did much better than what we thought we were going to be. And then you can see prior year spendable resources, 53.4 million net operating resources, and it brings us right down to where are we now at the end of the year in terms of available resources from all the prior years? We're at 48.9 million in the general fund. Here's a quick breakdown of that 48, 9 million because it's not all available. You have by code designated this for certain purposes, so it is restricted in use. You can see committed for encumbrances, again, those are contractual obligations, amounted to 4.6 million of that. Reserve for contingencies, these are for our emergencies, is 21 million based on the formula in SMC. Revenue replacement is 7.3 million. And then unappropriated and unassigned is 15.8 million. You do see that we have a strategic initiatives reserve, but under the formula in SMC, that is not yet funded because we did not have a positive variance. So again, I just wanted to, so I want to kind of break this down just a, a little bit more in terms of proposals. 15.8 million is a lot of unappropriated, unassigned fund balance, and that is just prior years accumulated outside of the reserves. So proposals are for your consideration to, as you also consider all of the ARPA requests in front of you and all the needs that come to you. Labor agreements, the proposal here, again, we've got seven open contracts. A lot of these open contracts have retroactivity payment that is anticipated. So we would be suggesting that we hold a significant portion of this for those retroactive payments related to those seven open labor agreements. Also, we have PDAs, public development agencies. We have a couple of them, I still call it West Plains, so I think S3, R3, and Northeast PDA, that we still have obligations to pay. We're working on the formulas to calculate what that payment amount is, so we are going to be obligated to pay them. So again, it is suggested that we hold some of this funding aside to pay that, and we are very, very close to getting some formulas and methodologies that we will then take to those PDAs to see if they concur. Special events grant program, this is something, you've heard a lot about the special events, so this is something that we would like to bring forward to you a little bit later when it's a little more mature, to see if you would have some consideration for that. That is also a key economic.
How is this different than the special events we've already funded? Because we've funded several hundred thousand for special events.
And it might be slightly different. So we worked on these proposals or these suggestions, and we'll bring some of that forward to you in more detail.
But like, just a flavor of what, I'm just trying to get in my head, what, what to duplicate it or what would be different than we've already?
In short, this would be just a reoccurring program every year for our special events. As you all know, we heavily subsidize a lot of our special events. So the, the theory behind this or the concept is to be fully transparent in what the full cost is, but in being fully transparent about the full cost, we'd also need to provide an opportunity for people to come forward and receive funding to help support and offset some of those costs, particularly in the policing.
I, I guess I'm just still trying, which events are you talking about? Because we give money to, we have set aside programs for Hoop Fest and Bloomsday and Lila, we already do that, so I'm wondering, how is this different than that?
If we can come back at another time, Council President, we can bring those information, that, that information forward, and I think that's a great future discussion.
So are we going to have something set up, now that we're talking about this?
Yeah.
Are we going to have then something set up to where a parade, Lila Festival, St. Patrick's Day, that they would be able to apply for grant money to pay those public safety costs?
Well, we already have it. That's what I'm thinking. We have two things. We have the LTAC, which they can use for their actual public safety, and then we have a big ARPA thing that we've approved, you know, we're finishing the final touches on it. So I'm trying to find out, how is this different than that? What, what are we looking, just big picture, like different sets of events or additional money or what?
Well, Council President, first, the, the ARPA, we were not sure of, as you said, and you just mentioned, it is still being worked out into the details of how that would play out. And ARPA, remember, ARPA cannot be used for general economic development, so this is more of a continuation of that project, but this is just an idea, this is just a suggestion. We can definitely bring some of the details forward for, for discussion. We want to make sure this is no intent to replicate or duplicate anything else. It's really absent any information of what the ARPA program is being worked out or LTAC. In, in the LTAC, there hasn't been a lot, Hoop Fest doesn't normally apply for that.
Yeah, they do, every year. They get money every year that they apply.
Okay. And, and my, my mistake on that, my mistake on that. So we, we can bring it back, this, these are just suggestions, just ideas, just concepts?
I'm just, go ahead.
The issue with LTAC, though, is, is that some of these smaller organizations don't get the money that Hoop Fest or...
Or LTAC, yeah. But that's why I'm trying to get a sense, is this trying to help those? And I'm just, I guess...
It would be great to have something extra out there, I'm sorry. But if we're going to discuss this, that's why, I mean, if you bring it up, you know we're going to ask questions. So we're asking the questions. So if we're going to discuss it, we need to discuss it.
True. And we can, we will have opportunities in the future to, to discuss all of these. We simply wanted to alert you to, yes, there's about 15 million, 15.8 million of resources available. Obviously, each one of these allocations, any allocation, would have to go through the city council. We just wanted to bring about some awareness of some of the pools on, on this, or how some of the requests may come forward to you. And we certainly envision that there would be deeper discussion on each of them.
Requests from whom?
I'm sorry, I don't know what that means.
You just said requests coming forward, requests from whom?
Who's?
Who's requesting?
Or presentation of, it would be...
But this is the mayor's suggestion how to spend the 15 million?
Yes, yes.
That's what I...
Just, just so that you have context when you're considering the ARPA proposals, you have context as this, as well as when, when and if departments start presenting challenges and stuff.
Is there a reason why you don't have fire overtime and fire and police capital, which seem to be super high priorities, and they're not even on this list, which tells me they're not a high priority, so?
They are a significant high priority, and they were included in the mayor's ARPA proposals.
So these aren't ARPA requests?
These are not ARPA proposals.
These are the reserves, unallocated reserves requests.
Can you tell us if they're going to be duplicative of ARPA?
They are not duplicative.
And it, it does look like we have $10 million of the 15. I mean, two-thirds of it is, is going towards labor agreements, and so I, I understand what we're saying, but it, it does look as if in here we have a significant amount, you know, contributing to, to our labor.
But that's not fire overtime. That's just if the contract goes.
Yes, and part of the strategy in looking at this and the mayor's ARPA proposals is ARPA can only be used for certain things under certain categories, and for labor agreements and such, revenue replacement has a cap on it.
Right. I don't think we're, I just, what I would love to see is putting aside the ARPA requests, this is always our request to you, is put your priorities regardless of ARPA, and then, then we can deal with that. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I just would wonder, Johnny, is there any more description or anything that you can provide? I just want to make sure we, we kind of know. I know we're spending a lot of time on this, but...
Yeah, so just thank you, Councilmember Cathcart. Council President Beggs, members of the City Council, Johnny Perkins, City Administrator. Just want to clarify, so these are proposed, suggested ideas as relates to that unallocated dollars, but specifically, I want to address the half a million dollars for the special events grant program. So that, that half a million, there was an idea brought forward to the council when the special event fees were going through to utilize half a million dollars of funds for like a grant program where events, organizations could apply for. Council did not support that, we went forward with the fees as proposed. So this is just a, an idea, if we decided to do that, this would be where you would get that half a million dollars to do that. So it's just a suggestion to utilize those funds for that special event fees that organizations have to pay for various public safety support during events.
And I, I would just follow up, so if, if we don't pay for out of ARPA, the, the fire overtime or police capital, I mean, are there things here that, where there is some room that we could include some of that out of the unappropriated fund?
My suggestion at this time is the only place that that would come is the efficiency or strategic investments or that bottom-line contingency. As many of you are aware, there are oftentimes when we have to come forward because things we just don't know, such as the winter warming center that opened up and we did not have enough appropriation at the time. So we brought those requests forward, and that's why the contingency amount is there. Hit one more key. If you look under efficiency and strategic investments, there are at least two that are, we, we just have price ranges, we don't quite know what they are, there's been some conversation. The telestaff and the PeopleSoft interface and coding alignment. So far, as you are aware, there is an overtime study and an overtime audit going on while we're still, and we're, we're very close to having the, the results on those. In... in communicating with those vendors regarding the data, this is definitely going to be a recommendation coming out, is to realign and redo our coding on that. And then the compensation and job analysis, that is also something that we have briefly touched on. In our labor agreements, as we're going through in some of the analysis we've done, there's a lot of challenges with our steps and different increases here and there, and so this is a study to, this would be a proposed study to look at those compensations and those jobs. Particularly, we've heard a lot from the labor agreements or through the labor negotiations as well, that a lot of our jobs seem to be out of touch with the market at this time.
Councilmember Kinnear.
I'm presuming in that category, you're going to look at out of grade as well?
Yes, it certainly could.
That's all part of that.
Yep. Just very quickly on revenue, I'm not going to go into a, a lot of details, they are inside of the, the report. Probably the big highlight here is sales tax definitely surpassed our expectations by quite a bit. That was, we believe, to be a large part of the, all the federal stimulus that was certainly flowing through our region at that time, but also compared to 2020 when everything was shut down, of course, we would be expecting that to be significantly larger than what 2020 had.
I can't quite read that last column of the budget actual difference variance on 2021 taxes. How much more is that?
The 8.3 million, or are you looking for a specific number?
Upper right, upper right corner. Okay. So, okay, so we got eight million more in taxes than we expected.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
That, that was the, the biggest surprise.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Given that we're perhaps looking at a recession, do we want to be a little bit more prudent about spending anything that's in reserves right now? Because it's very possible we're going to be meeting it six, eight, nine months from now.
That is an excellent point.
That makes me nervous.
Mm-hmm.
It all makes me nervous.
Yes.
One big nervous breakdown, yes.
Okay, for expenses, probably the big highlight here is, yes, there were savings. I think every division in the general fund had savings largely attributed to vacancies. And what we've heard from departments, a lot of our vacancies is really reflective of the extremely tight labor market out there. There are many times when it is taking months and months to go through the lists and bring people on board.
I have the same question, total expenses, is that down 11 million, some, almost, so far right, yeah.
So year-over-year variance you can see was 11 million more compared to 20 actual. A lot of that is, is the guild settlement we're seeing reflected in there, largely the guild settlement. And then the actual to budget variance, yes, was significantly under by 11 million, but part of that was also, again, the guild. We budgeted and did a significant budget change of close to 10 million, so we put the budget in, but because that settlement happened early on in the fiscal year, we were actually able to have 6 million of that classified right in 2020. So in the police department, it was, the budget was overstated, so that contributed a, a good chunk of that.
So it's about half of that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And I'm not going to quite cover here, you can just see 90% of the general fund revenue accounted is in nondepartmentamental, these are the divisions and how their revenues, their program revenues compared. Everybody did really spot on, municipal court was the one that was, municipal court, Public Works and Utilities, the furthest down, and a lot of that was in fines and, and such. Next. Here are your expenditures by division in the general fund, and you can see on that variance column, that third column over, the police department had the largest variance. Again, a lot of that was for the guild, but practically every division had savings. Year-end closing for the general fund, what I can say is we're still very fiscally sound, even having gone through the COVID, our total between the contingency, revenue replacement and unallocated still exceeds even GFOA recommendations. So we're in a very good financial position, which is not the same as many other jurisdictions continue to really struggle to, to recover very well. Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over now to the 2022 mid-year status and projections.
And I just have to let you know that I have to go, we have a presentation with the mayor, and so not a reflection that you're coming up to speak, I'm really actually very interested in what you're going to say, but I'm going to turn it over to Council President Protem, and Councilmember Cathcart has the same date with me. So, thanks, everyone.
Just us three.
What's the presentation?
I have no idea.
Oh, okay.
It's a press conference on interim zoning.
Everyone's leaving me. Okay, so I'm going to look at current year status for the general fund revenue and expense, and then look forward into 2023 and what we'd expect for that year. So to start with, general, general fund current revenues, current revenue expectations are 221.3 million for the end of the year. That's $4.4 million over the budgeted amount, so that's, that's positive. This is based on current actuals through May. Just another note, there's a lag between when we receive sales tax data, so we, we only have data through March. So as more of that comes out, we may be adjusting this on a monthly basis, depending on what we see there.
I'm sorry, you said March?
Yeah, yep, just through March. One thing to note is that we use 2018 and 19 as a basis for projecting forward. 2020 and 21 are essentially useless, just given how different those years were. But yeah, we'll continue to assess this and see where we're at going forward. Digging down a little bit further into the general fund revenue, you'll see the top line, we have property taxes, we're currently expecting that to just end up at or very close to the budget. The line below that, we have sales tax, and that's continued to be very strong, so currently projecting it to be $3 million over the budget. And then skipping down to the second to last line, miscellaneous income, this includes our interest earnings, and we're projecting to be about $1 million below budget there. That's essentially due to our expectations of higher interest rates that didn't occur essentially, but going forward, we would still anticipate this growing. I know there's a lot of data here, but I just want to focus at a very high level. The bottom right corner shows the total for general fund expenses, and we're currently projecting that that will come in on budget by about $316,000. The other item of note is a few lines above it. Police expenditures are projecting forward to be over by $2.7 million. This is almost entirely overtime and standby pay. So OT and standby pay are really at the core of that, that projection. And then looking forward at 2023, we're currently projecting at 3.9% increase over 2022's budget for, for general fund revenue. That would put us at 225 million. Historically speaking, we've averaged about 2.9 million in growth, but what we've seen recently is, is strong enough that we would expect this to continue. And again, as we get more information about what's occurring in the economy, then, you know, we'll introduce that, but currently, we're expecting to grow, or to increase by 3.9%. Primarily, sales tax, of course, property taxes and public utility taxes. Private utility taxes fluctuate mostly because most of them increased, but the fact that telephone is no longer really used as a landline, that tax decreases by, you know, close to half a million each year. So that, that group, the private utility taxes overall, just, they, they decrease because of that, so. Okay, so next, Paul is going to talk about the 2023 general fund trial budget, so I'm going to get that up on the screen for you.
My apologies for not being able to be there, we're, we're about 62 hours into a quarantine here, so, not that I'm counting hour by hour. So this general fund trial budget is something we, we started doing last year, you might remember it from the past, as the DFG, the Draft Fiscal Guidance. So we take the prior year revenue and prior year expenditures, we make some adjustments to it, and it gives us sort of a snapshot eye level about what we're seeing in the budget before we get into the departmental detail and, and specific changes or resource requests for the upcoming year. So quickly in this, the top section is the 2022 revenue, we made some of those adjustments for transfers in from other funds. And on this exercise, we use that historical 2.9% increase that Jake had mentioned, which would get us to about $222.6 million in revenue for 2023. We made similar adjustments in that middle section for the 2022 adopted budget, so we removed the temp season project employees for all departments except for either those with separately controlled boards, such as civil service, parks or library, or city council. We want departments to take another look about what their actual needs are and, and ask for those dollars back for those temp seasonal project employees. Similar reductions for reserve for payroll savings or total cost of compensation or budget adjustments. This section, we did increase the parks' general fund contribution, which is part of the city charter, where they receive 8% of the prior year general fund expenditures. And then we made some initial updates for contractual wage increases, updating current employees for step increases and, and those types of things, where we used either, if there was a tentative agreement on the table, we used those percentages, if not, we just used sort of a placeholder baseline percent increase for the other labor groups. On the benefit side, and these will tie to the asterisk at the bottom as well, we're assuming at this point a 0% increase in medical costs or medical contributions for 2023. We did include 4% per fire, which is part of the, the terms of their expired contract that we've been working under for the last couple of years, too. So all those adjustments on the expenditure side gets us to about $221.8 million, which if you take that revenue adjustment above, would leave you in a positive position of about $800,000, give or take some, some calculations. Once you get to that bottom section, though, these are the outstanding items, obligations, decisions, decisions or adjustments that still need to be made. Not all of these will directly impact the general fund, but we just wanted to start highlighting some of these here as issues that we know will need to be solved as we work to finalize the mayor's proposed and, and the eventual adopted budget from city council. So there's a range, also in the city charter for civil service, if they elect, they have, they're allowed to have between 0.5 and 1% of prior year classified employee spending. If they elected to go to that full 1%, there would be an impact there of about $656,000. We know there's going to be some increase to the general fund contribution to street capital, which is tied to the levy and the bonds, so we're assuming just the regular 1-ish percent increase to property tax levy for next year, with the general fund portion, again, going back to public safety capital, which is about $500,000 in our very preliminary estimates before we get data from the county. Historically, the general fund contribution to library increases by about 2.5% per year, that would be about $240,000. And then we start to get into those bigger, not necessarily general fund specific, but the needs that we know are out there. So this public safety capital needs comes from the CIP work at the moment, and that's about $16 million in unfunded public safety capital. General, other unfunded capital is about $3 million, and then some of those other categories you can see there. We know the risk allocation is going to go up for all citywide departments based on the last couple of years of experience and the increased cost of, to ensure the city outside of our own self-funded programs. Shelter system needs and then uniform overtime, again, are just, we know, sort of the big categories that are out there. So if you look at this, it seems like we might be about $21 million negatives, but again, not all of these are hitting the general fund, we just wanted to start putting these ideas out there, and then these will be further refined as we go through the budget process throughout the summer. And I'm happy to take any questions, or just turn it back over to Tanya.
Anybody have questions? Okay. Thanks, Paul.
So you can see remaining council members, a lot of challenges and issues that, that we are working through, and we started a lot with, well, we've been working through a lot of them previously, but the real kickoff was the retreat last week. So again, the purpose of the retreat was really for the divisions to come together and really get a better understanding collectively, what are their goals, objectives, what initiatives do they have on their plates, and, and share a little bit of their challenges. And certainly what we came away with was, as Chief Mydl put it, very common sense. We all shared a lot of themes, but it seemed very much for a strong recovery is back to basics, back to doing what we do really well, and providing the necessary tools and resources to do that job very well. One of the themes that we heard almost unanimously with every division is definitely staffing and the importance of staffing and the importance of our employees. But also, you know, building on the successes that we have had, and then you can see, yeah, the last part there is invest in ourselves. Again, we have seven open labor agreements, and that is definitely coming through in those negotiations. We're on our road to recovery, but we're still a long ways from the end of that road.
You just brought up a thought that I had to share. I can't remember, and I've been here a while, I can't remember the last time we've done anything really, really well. And I think what you just said is important, that we have, if we don't start focusing internally with our workforce and how we are treating and how we are paying the, the environment for our employees, we are never going to come out of this. So I'm, I'm glad that that was talked about, I'm glad that that's a priority, because I think that's, if we don't build up that foundation, it's going to take us a long time to bounce back from what we've all been through the last two or three years. So thank you for bringing that up. I hope the administration means it, and I, I hope that we're true to our word, but that's where we really should be focusing our efforts on if we are going to move forward and become a stronger city. So thank you.
Okay, remaining council members, thank you.
Thanks, Tanya. Thanks, Jake. Appreciate it. Questions or?
It's cold.
It's cold.
It's freezing.
And we're all ready to go. So we'll see you all June 27th, briefing at 3:30. Have a great weekend, thank you. We're adjourned.
Thanks for using WebEx.